I'd like to call it Tuesday, May 1st. Meeting of the St. Joseph County Board of Commissioners. Order please stand for the pledge. Remain standing for a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. We seek blessings on the tasks before us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity, and our accuracy in our decision with impartiality. Remind us that all we do have today, all we have accomplished is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
All right. First item on the agenda, opening reading of bids. Property is eligible for transfer to a nonprofit corporation used for helping good. Single? Yeah.
I believe that we advertised for bids for three parcels of real estate located at 906 Portage Avenue, 908 910 Portage Avenue, and 736 California for any nonprofit organizations. And the bids were due today at 9:45 a.m. And I think you've got one.
We see one from the near northwest neighborhood. Is there anyone else who wish to submit a bid or submit anything for this? Okay. So?
I'll prepare a resolution. I'll review it and prepare the resolution.
All right. Motion to accept this bid.
So moved.
Second motion. The second of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. You take care.
All right. Next report for requests. First from the Board of Commissioners. First item is the Accounts Payable Document. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the Accounts Payable Document.
Second. We have motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Next up, we have Investment in Regional Economic Development Strategy. Regina Everton could not be here today, so I'm going to handle this on her behalf. This is South Bend, Elkhart Regional Partnership, which is an offshoot of the RDA and the Regional Cities Initiative. This is a way for us to continue to work collaboratively from an economic development standpoint. So this is a continued partnership with St. Joseph County, Elkhart County, and Marshall County, and its wide range of participants who are joining economically. We've got private sector, we've got local governments, college universities, community foundations, lead development entities, and some utility groups as well. And the ask is of both South Bend, St. Joseph County, and City of Mishawaka, as who the government participants are going to be in St. Joseph County. And they're asking for $14,000 investment to help further regional economic development. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you. Commissioner Castelni, since you're presenting this on Ms. Everton's behalf, I guess my questions are for you and your counselor. From the President, right if I have, it's not really clear who would be paying in these fees. It looks like they want $14,000 from our county over a four-year period. Is that correct?
$14,000 per year from 2018 through 2020.
Okay. And are only the three counties being asked to pay funds? Because it says here they want to introduce 19 other members or expand it to 19 members.
Sure. So currently, as I mentioned, St. Joseph County, City of South Bend, and the City of Mishawaka within St. Joseph County are participating in this. And then I believe in Marshall County, it's Marshall County Government itself, Plymouth, I'm not sure who the other entity is, and then in Elkhart County, it's the City of Elkhart, Goshen, and I think Napanee is as well, as well as Elkhart County.
So I guess my question, I'll have to go back then. How many current board members are there? It's going to be expanded to 19. How many current members are there?
On the Regional Partnership Board, I'm uncertain as to, I think there are about 17 or so, 15 to 17. This, the financial commitment of these governmental entities does not, will not increase the size of the board. There's one governmental representative from each county.
Okay.
That serves on the board.
Because the last sentence of the first page, it says we are expanding the governing board to 19 members.
Right. So that has already been expanded. That is not, that is not through action taken with this pledge, but that is expanded to 19 total members.
Okay. So it already is 19 members.
Correct.
And are all 19 members being asked to pitch money?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I've seen a lot of money spent on economic development, and I just think this seems like more money down the drain, possibly. It could pay off dividends, you know? I often hear the terms catalyst for change and game changer. They're all really nice terms, but it seems the last four years, we were giving, you know, the Chamber of Commerce tons of money for Grow SGC, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Prior to that, giving the Chamber tons of money for Project Future. And, you know, real economic development comes when investors want to invest their own money. And so investing more government money, government money that can be better served on the citizens who pay the taxes, that I'd like to see more of.
Any other questions or comments? Might there be a motion?
Motion to approve the investment in this regional economic development.
Second, we have a motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Passes two to one. Just like to add a comment of this is truly a partnership, and that's what makes this different than a lot of other entities. We've got, the primary investors are private in nature, or are college and universities, that's who the primary funders of this is. So we are being asked to also to come in at a rate to show we've got, as they say, a little skin in the game. I know one of the things this group is going to look to do is to go out and try to attract foundation dollars to the area. So that's one of the important pieces of having all local units of government, many local units of government participate in the process, as well as private, the private sector and education and some of the other public sector entities make us more attractive to apply for that funding. So. All right. Next, Resolution R-8C-2018, Disposition of Real Property, Central Garage.
Good afternoon. Eric, good morning. Bill Shalillo, Economic Development Offices on the 11th floor. Attached to the proposal you received in the resolution in your packet, you received a resolution for the disposition of real property. We're seeking to begin the process to dispose of real property owned by the Board of Commissioners located on Lathrop Drive, currently known as the Central Garage property. Central Garage property consists of three properties. Those three properties are parcels that we will no longer need as we begin the consolidation of the county highway garages over the next 18 months. We will seek to do some pre-development or pre-disposition services. The reason we're here before you today is because anything based on, based on the disposition statute, anything that could have value over $5,000 or under $50,000 needs to start with approval by the Board of Commissioners to begin the process to spend public funds on the disposition process. So I would seek your approval for this resolution.
Questions or comments?
First, a question, Mr. Shalillo. Because this is the historic airport property, doesn't that also require permission from the county council?
The historic airport property? I'm not sure what you mean by that, sir.
Okay. Well, I believe that it does require county council's approval. I may be wrong. Maybe you could check into that.
Well, actually, if the sale cost has the potential to exceed $50,000, it would require council approval. But since we haven't begun appraisals at this point in time, we don't know what the value is. So if it's determined that the value could be over $50,000, we will go through the council for disposition.
And when the resolution says that you would like to sell for at least $50,000, are we talking potentially all 8 acres?
I think what we're looking to do is team up with some internal, as well as external partners to look at disposition. The airport has expressed an interest in some of the property. We have a private sector developer that's interested in some of the property, and we have internal business partners that are interested in the existing garage structure. So one of the things we want to do is bring all the partners together, look at how the land could be split up, and then begin a process to do disposition.
So 80 acres divided by 50, right, it could be $625 an acre, possibly the cheapest land in St. Joseph County. Sales approved.
I don't know how you come to that figure, but from a real estate perspective, I don't think that's what you'd sell in the land force.
Well, I would hope, I think the $50,000 is a threshold.
That is a threshold amount.
It's not a proposed dollar amount.
So can I comment, Mr. President? Just the $50,000 figure in here, it says if the board, that you guys determines that the sale of the property is desirable, and the property is appraised for at least $50,000, then the county council will also need to approve the sale by statute. So I was just letting you guys be aware of what the process is. I'm unaware of anything relative to the property being this worth, if we need county council approval on that, but I didn't look at that issue at all.
I, there is no, as I understand it, this land has never been previously owned by the airport, so I don't believe it's ever.
Well, it just, the airport was a term used because it's near the airport. It just is the county, airport is a county airport. And I think you clearly stated, the counselor, that if it's sold for more than $50,000, I think, as it's stated here, the county council will need to approve the sale.
Certainly.
And hopefully, we do get more than $625 an acre, you know?
It has to be appraised, right?
Yeah, we have to appraise it, right.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Well, those are my questions for Mr. Shalillo. His long answers made the time longer. I think that this is valuable county land that should be retained by the county. I can recall several solid waste meetings that it would have been a great sign for the solid waste building, which instead we bought a new one on Kear Street, the Solid Waste Board. This facility probably could have been there, or it could be here. There's many county assets that I hate to see this sold so rapidly. And also with the expansion of the Newcombe Center, which is also still there, but not part of the sale. But if there's going to be a lot of growth in the Newcombe Center, and hopefully there is, that there is, there's more desire to keep people, you know, nonviolent offenders home working instead of sending them away to jails, that we do allow room for the Newcombe Center to expand and grow.
Any other comments? Just as a brief point of clarification, I'm assuming when you said internal partners being included in the conversation, that those internal partners could be Newcombe Center, Coroner, other entities.
Prosecutors' Office, Metro Homicide.
So this is the beginning piece, it's not a fire sale that we're beginning to enable, that we are just looking at the process of if we wanted to sell any property, what would that look like? What would the value be? All right. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this Resolution R-8-C-2018 with the disposition of real property for the central garage area.
Second, we have motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes two to one. Next up, Resolution R-9C-2018 and R-9A-C-2018, Disposition of Real Property, Gumwood Road Property.
So before you today, there are two resolutions for property currently that the county owns on Gumwood Road. These were properties that were acquired as part of the Gumwood Road widening. These are properties that had had houses on them. The houses have since been removed. We have had some interest in them from the private sector, but we have to begin a process where we dispose of them, and we must get them appraised. And because they will likely exceed the $5,000 threshold, we needed to get Commissioner approval to begin the process, and we wanted to get your approval so that we could spend county funds on disposition of property.
And I will note that we attempted to sell these properties with structures on them, and we tried, on at least two occasions, did not receive any bids. So then we took the structures down because one of them was uninhabitable, hoping that this could make the properties more attractive.
Absolutely.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this Resolution R-9-C-2018 and R-9A-C-2018 for the disposition of real property of the Gumwood Road property.
Second. We have motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Next, Jonathan Burke, Tactical Energy Group Agreement.
Hello.
Good morning. I think I get the distinguished honor of coming here because the genesis of this was my idea, and so Mr. Castelni decided to be responsible for coming here to present this. But give me a little bit of history. As the guaranteed energy savings process holds on, there are going to be invoices coming in, and we've got a committee put together that's going to approve those invoices. And my suggestion was that we get somebody to verify that if we get an invoice for 20%, that 20% of that project was actually done. That conversation turned into Jonathan Burke was our suggestion to do that. So in this email chain of going around to how this process is going to work, Mr. Burke, Tactical Energy Group, provided a contract. I forwarded it on to Mr. Woods, Attorney Woods, and he made some changes, a lot of writing on that, but I appreciate your input. And here we are today. I assume you have the copy of the proposed contract in front of you. If you've got anything to add. Do you have any questions?
Jonathan Burke, Tactical Energy Group. The scope of the work is actually substantially more than what Mr. Nolan just, I mean, that's a key component of it. But there are a lot of additional things that would be involved in my work moving forward. My prior work was project development. Moving forward, it'll be project administration, that sort of thing. So there are a lot of additional things that need to be addressed and handled as we move forward and implement the project. One of the things that I've been working on lately is just applying for the rebates and getting all that. It's a lot of simple things, but they add up to a lot of dollar savings for the county. The rebate process, we yield about $150,000 in benefit to the county. So I've been working with Performance Services on getting that going. Some of the other things, working on drafting a job description for the new energy manager that's also a part of the contract. So if there, and then you see the list of, I think you have the list of the scope of the consulting work, but it's really to make sure that we achieve a good result from all the work we've already put into this during the implementation phase.
It's a flat fee, $125 per hour.
Correct.
Any questions or comments?
Hi, just want, oh, go ahead.
Lady first.
I'm sorry. Oh, no, I just want to say I'm excited about being able to move forward with this, and I'm excited that you'll be able to help us move in the right direction. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've certainly questioned this project a lot as it's come before our desk. Certainly has come up before the council because it's their baby. And certainly, whatever we do, road projects or what have you, we have to hire a consultant or specialist to monitor that for us. So I'm glad the council has selected someone to do that. In our past contracts, though, Mr. Burke, you've had not to exceeds. Not to exceeds, was that ever brought up in discussion?
Just because this is a, I don't, I'll just comment, I never had those discussions. It was for an hourly rate of $125 an hour, and the scope of services sort of defined in 13 sections here in the agreement. So we never discussed the not to exceed.
No, and that came up when I was, I've been going over the project results with the finance team, with Mr. Hammond's team, John Murphy, and Steve Dalton. So this additional work scope, we had this discussion in that group, and did you want to comment on that at all? Like, I mean, we didn't, we didn't put.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Mike Ham, St. Joseph County Auditor with office on the second floor. The reason we didn't go with the not to exceed is we don't know how long the project's going to go. So it depends on how, we don't want to come back and say we need to extend this because we've got another month or two to work on the project, so.
Okay, thank you. And then just lastly, Mr. Burke, are you exclusively working for us, or are you also working for Performance Plus?
On this project, I'm working to represent the county exclusively. I don't have any contractual arrangements with Performance Services. We've tried to keep it clean so that I maintain my representation of the county in this project.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, is there a?
If I may, just a question, the not to exceed amount, it's kind of a hard thing to get your hands around, but one of the invoices that we'll be approving monthly, as they come in, will be Mr. Burke's. We'll be able to monitor it very closely. And yes, that was specifically discussed, that we wanted Tactical Energy Group to be employee of the county, not of Performance Services, and try to keep the hound dog not in charge of the butcher shop.
Thank you for meat references. It helps the West Side guy. And thank you, Senator, honorable auditor, for your comments.
Any other questions or comments? Might there be a motion?
Motion to approve the Jonathan Burke with this Tactical Energy Group agreement.
Second. Motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Guess that hound does hunt. Department of Information Technology requests approval of tech refresh lease schedule. Mr. Hammond?
Well, again, Mike Ham, St. Joseph County Auditor with office on the second floor. This is the newest schedule, the lease schedule, the master lease, so we can move forward with the next phase of the tech refresh, which will consist of the seventh floor offices, not including the Board of Public Works, which is already done, as well as the second floor, which would be the auditor's office and the treasurer's office. Just so you know, at this juncture, we've gone ahead and finished Public Works, which also includes area plan, the Health Department, Juvenile Justice Center, the Election Board, County Police, and jail, which means the post, Detective Bureau, Civil Division, and all patrol cars. So also probably this year, we're going to try to squeeze in the assessors and voter registration. 2019 should be wrapping it up with the first round with the clerks, adult probation, and the prosecutor's office, and then we'll be circling back around for the next phase.
Questions or comments?
Congratulations to the auditor and Scott Suniff and the whole staff there. It's a lot of work.
Well, he's been, that team has been amazing. What Scott has done is incredible.
Only so I'm glad we're moving forward with this and updating everything. Thank you.
If there are no more questions or comments, is there a motion?
Motion to approve this tech refresh lease schedule.
Second. Motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Mike? Office of Prosecuting Attorney requests approval to apply for an Adult Protective Services continuation grant.
Yes, Bob Reisdofer, Prosecutor's Office, 11th floor of this building, 10th floor of this building. We're asking for approval to apply for a continuation of the Adult Protective Services Grant issued by the State FSSA Department. We're asking for $390,849, which will fund eight investigators and the director, their travel expenses and their communication expenses.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve for them to apply for this Adult Protective Services Continuation Grant.
Second. Motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, voter registration, request approval to change door at polling location.
Hello, Kim Ruskovich and Arielle Brady here at voter registration here on the fourth floor. McKinley School contacted us about moving the door from door 12 to door 14 with concern with safety of the students.
Any questions or comments? So I assume they will put up proper notification directions and all that stuff so people get where they need to go?
Correct. We do want to notice there's something put out for this so that the public know that there was a door change.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Well, to answer that, maybe Marie could ask a, send out a press release to that.
I've researched a lot and I've provided work with Terry Brethley on this. If it's, the change is more than two days before the election notice has to be provided of the change in the same manner as the original list was provided, so however the list was provided, putting it in the newspaper in the same manner as it was originally advertised as notice. So a press release may or may not be sufficient.
Would not be sufficient. And do they have to advertise the whole schedule or just the change?
No, just the change. Just the memo.
Okay. Is that clear? So does that go back to your desk?
Yes, it does.
All right, great. I was wrong understanding that.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve to change the store at McKinley School polling location.
Second. Motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, Department of Public Works. First item is, you can set the agenda. I will note, is there a request to approve Performance Box in Pleasant Valley North, Section 4, subdivision, consent to access public right-of-way license agreement with AECom, following Hero's Ride, and request for approval of traffic repertory resolution in Canowood East subdivision. Any questions or comments regarding any of these items? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second. Motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item, request approval of R-36488 Adams Trail Phase 2, change orders numbers 3 through 6.
Good afternoon, Eric. Good morning. Bill Shalillo here on behalf of Jessica Clark, County Engineer. The first item before you is a change order for the Adams Road from Elm Road to County Knowles Drive. The project is complete. The change order's actually come under budget, so we'd ask for your approval on this.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this R-36488 Adams Trail Phase 1 to change orders from 3, 4, 5, and 6.
Second. Motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request to approve engineering services agreement for post-flood inspection of St. Joseph County River Bridges.
The proposal before you today is in agreement with DLZ to perform post-flood inspections on some county bridges throughout the county. Agreement establishes the fee necessary to perform these services at an amount to not to exceed of $16,800. DLZ will be inspecting 19 structures. Any questions? I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Are there any questions and or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this engineering service agreement with DLZ to do the post-flood inspection of St. Joseph County River Bridges.
Second. Motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request approval MS4 Program Technical Assistance Services.
This is a proposal for on-call services with Christopher Burke Engineering to provide MS4 Program Technical Assistance Services so that we can get projects reviewed through the county review process. Any questions? If you have an answer?
Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this MS4 Program Technology Services with Christopher Burke Engineering.
Second. We have motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, request for proposals for Pierce Road reconstruction from US 31 Miami Highway Engineering Services.
So before you today is a request for proposals for pre-engineering services, or engineering services for Pierce Road reconstruction. This would be from the new interchange on US 31 east to Miami Highway. This is the first of many pieces of work we anticipate doing on the southern end of St. Joseph County. So we'd ask for your approval for this RFP. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this proposals for Pierce Road reconstruction from US 31 Miami Highway Engineering Services.
Second. Motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Lastly, request to approve RNS 91601-2, revised change order number three, New Carlyle Development Area Water and Sewer Improvements.
So last summer, we completed a water and sewer project out in the New Carlyle area related to the Energy Center.[1723.33]
This is revised change order number 3, which is the final, final change order for the project. Some additional equipment needed to be purchased, so that's what this change order relates to. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there, in fact, any questions? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve this revised change order number 3, which is the final one for RNS-916001/2-1 to move forward with NCEDA water and sewer improvements.
Second. Motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to old business, seeing none. Public comments. Are there any public comments?
Robin Chalan, I'm here as the Director of Cornage Manor, 3016 Cornage Avenue, South Manidana, 46628. And I've never been to a commissioner meeting, so I didn't realize it was this formal. So I'm not sure if maybe I should come back and maybe ask to be on the agenda. But I had questions about the Volan Drive project. I tried to call in DNR and tried to get the surveys that were done around the cemetery. But I haven't gotten good answers from Commissioners Castelli, so.
I would interest you to, your first stop to be Mr. Shalio, who is the running point for that, for a county perspective anyway. So hopefully he can help get you the answers that you want.
Okay. Because we're not, you know, when I talked to Rachel from DNR, she said that she had not seen the surveys. It did not, I know there was a cemetery there, but I know it's a registered cemetery. So I would think that those would have had to have been approved by the city and the county. But before work continues, just wanted to ensure that those were all done.
Get with the bill? Get with the bill, and you should, and then if there's an issue that we need to become engaged in, then please let us know, and we will certainly do whatever we need to do to help assist you in what you need.
Okay. And I also have a nomination, I talked to the Commission, the Preservation Commission, and I will get back to you, Jamie Woods, to see if we can get on, we're already on the national, we're trying to get a local registry so that we can be approved for grants.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Are there any other public comments?
Mr. Thomas? Yes, for those who haven't heard, there was another death on State Road 2 in Larison Road this morning. And I remember spring of last year, you know, there was a death then. Encouraging this board to encourage, you know, economic development, Public Works, to send letters to Endot. And I believe they did, to say that, you know, we need a light there. You know, there's all the truck traffic from the steel plant, there's truck traffic in from the power plant. And it's, and then there's deaths, and there's just regular accidents which are tragically harming people. And, you know, and just please send another letter to Endot that, you know, please ask them to act. State Road, they need to address the problem.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, a motion recess is in order.
So moved.
Second. Motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tough luck. We are recessed.